I have a birthday with the exception of Commissioner Coleman. Well, I would invite you in joining me as we sing happy birthday to Commissioner Coleman.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bob. Happy birthday to you.
And many more. And many more. Happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you.
The, uh, all right, if you would stand and join me in the invocation, followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Strickland, this guy here to my left. Lord, we just thank you today for this gorgeous day you've given us. We thank you for your blessings that you have so bountifully bestowed upon this, this community. Lord, we thank you most of all for your mercy, your grace, and your love for us. Lord, we ask your protection, particularly during this holiday season for our first responders. It seems to be such an active time for them. Lord, we pray that your, your arms would be around them and protecting them and, and as they go out every day protecting us. Lord, we thank you now for this time together, for the freedom we have to join here today to discuss the issues of this county. And we'd ask for your guidance and your wisdom during this process. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tell you what we're gonna do is, Mayor, we've got a joint meeting here and I think we'll, I think you've probably got more to talk about than we do. And so I'll just turn this thing over to you, if that's okay.
That's fine, sir. And I thank you, and I thank you, Commissioner, for inviting, setting up this meeting too as well, inviting us all here to be here. Apologize to my commissioners that aren't here due to probably other obligations. I'm looking for one to probably come in in a minute now. However, as we start, um, um, I think it'd probably best if we just continue to go on with the agenda.
Sure, okay. All right, that's fine. Okay, um, so we've, our first item on the agenda is to receive an update on Republic Services, the recycling program. And Ivan, you going to?
There you are.
Do you wanna come up and share with us?
I've done something, for, for those of you who, who know me fairly well, I've done something I don't normally do. And that's, I've written my comments down versus going off the cuff trying to keep it concise for you. I'm gonna be talking a little bit about how to make recycling sustainable. We're gonna talk about, I've got a couple of different handouts that are, that I've been given to the commissioners. And then there's some handouts on the back table there. There's basically three of them. One of them is talking about recycling sustainable, the current market that we're in with recycling. One of them is just a generic handout on how to, yeah, let's call them best practices with recycling. And then the third one that I provided in there is just a, a blog that came out very recently talking about the economics of recycling. So anyways, good afternoon, and, and again, happy birthday, Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. We've got a few different folks here from Republic, and I want to go ahead and recognize them. From our sales team, we have Ann Daniel. And on our operations side, Charlie Krevling is the operations manager. And then Tony Leday is one of our supervisors. Those guys are responsible for making sure that everything gets taken care of. Yes, sir?
You might introduce yourself.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I should've introduced you. I thought everybody knew Ivan.
Sorry. I'm Ivan Figueroa. I am a Glen County resident. My role with Republic Services is the manager of municipal sales, municipal services. I, I make sure that you guys at the city and the county are getting what you need and kind of act as a liaison between the city and the county. And anything to do with the contracts, I, I get involved in that. So, again, thank you for, for allowing us a few minutes to give you an update on recycling. We're here to provide update on recycling. We've been asked by the transfer station owners, Liberty Roll Off and Recycling, to remove glass from the recycling stream. And so today I've got one ask and one request. And the request is for consensus on a date to remove glass from the recycling stream. And the ask is, we want to do an education to residents, not only on the changes with the glass, but also cha-, you know, best practices to help sustain recycling so that if you are recycling at home, your recycling is a part of the solution. On the, on the request for consensus for a date for getting glass out of the recycling stream, as has been requested of us, we've spoken with your staffs, both on the city and the county, and the recommendation has been January 1st. That's a natural milestone that, that everybody can relate to. Liberty Roll Off and Recycling had asked for an earlier date, but January 1st, I think, is the easiest for our residents to remember. On recycling in America, just as a general update, I want to focus on a couple of different areas. Providing background on what has been the largest impact in recycling recently, as well as, secondly, using this time to highlight how we can all be better recycling residents and help ensure that we're a part of the solution. And, and the reason I talk about that is, the one thing that we find is a fairly significant threat to recycling is contamination. And the contamination is where, you know, the, one of the bigger ones is, let's call them pizza boxes. The, the greasy pizza box can't be recycled. And even worse is if we throw a greasy pizza box with pieces of the pizza into the recycling container. And we see that fairly regular. What happens is, it's not only going to contaminate your bin, but, you know, depending on the mess, it could contaminate the entire load. That's where it really starts making an impact. And so the education process, reinforcing a program that we've put together called Empty, Clean, and Dry will help everybody. There, there actually is a term that we, that we have for, you know, residents that put a variety of different non-recyclable items into the recycling bin. We, we call it wishful recycling. Things such as garden hoses and plastic grocery-type bags actually can cause harm to the recycling materials, the equipment used. They tend to wrap around because there's a lot of conveyors. And, you know, in a, in a typical recycling facility, half their day is literally spent cutting out these things in the equipment. So the, the, getting those types of items out of the recycling stream and focusing on the items that, that can be truly recycled, flattened cardboard, pa-, mixed paper, metal cans, plastic bottles, and jugs will make a big difference for everybody. And again, the whole idea is to clean up the recycling stream and, and certainly get those materials truly recycled. I do want to mention that there are three ways to recycle. And recycling at the curbside is actually one of the last things. We want to focus on reducing the amount of one-time items that we use wherever possible. To reuse items, you know, that, that water jug that we have, that, that plastic water jug, just refilling it one time. If everybody just refilled it one time, can you imagine the impact there? Because that's reducing the amount of materials that actually go in. Little things like that make a very big difference. So, I want to go ahead and give you an update on the market conditions, what, what's, what's going on today. And so there has been a very big drop in the value of recycling commodities. Now, glass, one of the reasons that we're up here at all is, for a long time, been a negative value. We've actually had to pay to recycle glass for some time. But over the past year, other commodities have dropped in value significantly. Certainly, mixed paper and cardboard has dropped dramatically. And the biggest contributor to the drop in value is due to China's exit from recycling marketing. That event has been called China Sword. Yes, sir?
A question for you, and I waited for you to bring that up.
Yes, sir.
If, if China and the tariff situation hadn't come up, would we be having this meeting today?
Possibly not. Glass has been, and again, I can't say definitively, but glass has been a negative value for some time. It's, it's been a subject that's been looked at very closely. When glass gets broken, it tends to cling to things like newspaper and, and cardboard rendering that basically is trash. But the other materials values dropping has made a, made a focus on how do we make recycling more economical? And, and so to answer your question, it, it may or may not have been. Certainly, the contamination issue's always been there, but it, it's possible that, let's just say it's made a big difference.
We might get Christmas presents with Donald Trump, you know? And that could be to get something resolved with China. Now, is everything gonna go back together like it was with recycling going back to China? Do you think, or will that take some time and some work?
Well, we'll hopefully, hopefully, having this big, big of a focus on recycling, whether it's going to China or whatever, will drive manufacturers to figure out how they can use those materials in a, in, in many different ways. The, and the issue is, recycling actually is fairly limited in how it's done. So hopefully, expanding this kind of pressure, because we all know it's not just Glen County, it's not just Georgia, it's a nationwide issue. And hopefully, this kind of focus and pressure will drive people to figure out how to make it more economical. Yes, sir.
So, since the, this service of recycling glass will no longer be available to us, is there gonna be a reduction in the cost that's charged in our contract with you all because of it?
Yeah, and that's an excellent question. I, I'm gonna say no. It's, it's almost a wash because again, while that commodity is gonna come out of the recycling, it's gonna go into the trash. So the biggest factor being weight and the logistics of moving it from point A to point B, and that really doesn't change that much. We've got a short, three-minute video to talk a little bit about China Sword. Let me go ahead and run that. There is another website, recycling simplified dot com. Recycling Simplified, as I talked with Leah and, and others of the community, it's a very generic website, and it gives both some print material and some videos if the outside organizations, if your community organizations wanted to share that. So with Liberty Roll Off's request that we get glass out of the recycling and having this kind of attention, we want to go ahead and use this time to educate the public on best practices for recycling, and which in the long run is gonna help all of us. I've gone ahead, or we've gone ahead and taken a look at some marketing plans, some education plans to help with the, with the clean, empty, and dry, and, you know, best practices on recycling. I've put together some costs, and I kind of estimate that it'd be about $2 per household that recycles for the marketing pieces. And for the marketing, we're talking about a sticker that would be placed on the recycling cans, newspaper ads, radio ads, just kind of reminding people of the best practices. The $2 per household number is based on, you know, again, some estimates that have been done. And what that comes down to is, there's about 6,000 homes, again, that are recycling in Brunswick, 13,000 homes in Glen County that are, that are recycling. And so our ask is, and I said that there's a request for consensus on a date, and then the ask. And the ask is, on cost sharing, we're asking if the two local governments would consider some type of a split on the cost, perhaps a third, 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 or what I had suggested is perhaps if the, if you guys would allow us to do a one-time, $1 per household charge for those that are recycling, and then we would, we would take care of the balance of it.
Is that a dollar a week?
No, 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 it's just a one-time, $1.
$1?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we, we've got, we're providing some dollars into that as well. Yes, sir.
So the $1 is for what, sir?
Uh, that would be to help pay for the radio ad, for the newspaper print, and for the sticker. And then we'll, we'll, we'll take care of the labor on getting the sticker on basically 19,000 cans.
Specifically, what are you asking from the city and the county for a dollar?
A dollar from each household?
That, that is participating. So for the county, it would be a $13,000 amount. For the city, it would be a $6,000 amount. And I, I don't expect that there'll be an answer today, but for something for you all to consider, and we can continue talking about that.
That would only apply to those that have recycling cans, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we service a lot more than 13,000 residents in Glen County.
But everybody would be paying for it if the county picks up the tab. That the people who don't recycle, they would be paying for it.
It would be, the 13,000, there are, we service about, what, 27,000?
Everybody, because the money's coming. We're not separating the cost.
That's so true.
It's the same thing in the city.
Yes, sir.
Everybody would be paying for it, even the ones who don't recycle.
Everybody in the city does have a cart, but again, that's just something to, to consider.
So what do, what, what is that $1 gonna pay for? I know you said it's gonna pay for radio.
A radio ad.
And sticker.
Yes, ma'am.
How many radio ads? How many times is something gonna be in the paper? And what is that message that you're trying to get across specifically?
The message will be focused on the glass reduction and then best practices, as we've seen. And the reason I didn't put together how many radio ads, how many newspaper ads, is because again, I don't have a firm budget. I, I don't know what the total amount, if there was gonna be participation at what level. So once we have that, we'll, we'll go ahead and put together the firm information. That's why I didn't anticipate that there would be a decision on that today.
So it's getting the word out that no more glass.
As well as best practices on?
The clean.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So was our, our staff consulted on this, at this campaign? I mean, you're asking us to pay for something that you've come up with and saying that it's the best way to get the word out. I mean, we have staff that may have some other ideas that it may not cost $13,000 to get the word out.
Yeah, we, we, again, we're perfectly good with working at your direction as to how we want to get the message out. The, the big thing is getting the message out.
So are you gonna still, or how, how effective do you think this initial move would, would be?
It's gonna?
You're gonna have those, you're gonna drop glass regardless. And I mean, you're still gonna have to pay somebody to pull it out.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, it's not gonna be, I wouldn't think, compared to everything else, you'd have 100% participation on this.
No, sir. Again, it's just the nature of a, of a slow acceptance in that. So it's going to be, it's gonna be a long process in educating everybody. Yes, sir. Charlie, you had raised your hand. Did you have anything that you wanted to share? Sorry. So again, the, the big ask that I have for today is just consensus on, if we have consensus on a January 1st date. And then we can work from that on whether there'll be participation on the marketing plan financially. Either way, we have to get the message out. That's, that's definitely something that has to be done.
Sir, excuse me. We know that, you know, it's something that you're asking to do, and we're taking your word for it, and it ought to be done. But we in the city have been having issues with, with Republic Service doing pickups. So, you know, you're asking us to trust you again, that, that you'll get the ads out and this, this program be successful. But we've been experiencing not-so-good service from you guys. I realize that you're the only commodity in town right now. But my question basically is, waste management charging, I mean, stop with glass as well? Or is it just only Liberty Roll Off requiring that, that feature? Or is this something industry-wide that's happening around the United States?
Yes, sir. No, it is, getting the glass out in particular has been situation by situation. But yes, it's been all across the U.S. As recently as a couple of months ago, nearby Candler County had to stop glass specifically. They were bringing their materials to Bullock County, and Bullock County had said no more. So we definitely see it around us.
What about Camden or either Ware County or Wayne County? What do they do?
They don't recycle.
They don't? Oh, we the only recyclers there?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
No, no, no problem. Let me do ahead, go ahead, and I've got one last short, one-minute video. And this is highlighting a little bit of the clean, empty, dry campaign.
Recycling can be a simple thing that has a big impact on all of us. Republic Services can help you make a difference in your community with these quick and easy tips to becoming a better recycler. It's as simple as one, two, three. First, know what to throw. You should always recycle paper and flattened cardboard, metal cans and plastic bottles and jugs with the lids on. Things like construction materials, yard waste, and greasy pizza boxes are not recyclable. Here are some common household items that are mistaken for recyclables. These items can contaminate or infect. These items can contaminate or interfere with the recycling process. When in doubt, throw it out. Now that you know what to recycle, it's time to make sure it's properly prepared. Recyclables should be empty, clean of all food and liquids, and dry before you place them in your recycling container. The last step is the easiest. Never bag or bundle your recyclables. Placing each item in the container individually allows us to sort recyclables faster and more efficiently. This will ensure they become quality materials that can be turned into useful new products. By following these three simple steps, know what to throw, empty, clean, dry, and keep it loose, you can help eliminate contamination and minimize the amount of recyclable material that goes into a landfill. Together, we can make a difference in our homes, our communities, and our world. Learn more on how to become a better recycler at recycling simplified dot com.
Yeah, everybody's guilty of putting things in the recycling that needed to be cleaned out. Certainly, I, I had had multiple conversations about whether or not you had to clean it out, and I, of course, have also been educated on that.
So question, uh, uh.
Yes, sir.
This was a good educational piece that should have been done earlier, so everybody be aware of what to do, how to recycle. And we just assumed that throwing plastic and throwing plastic bags in there would be just fine, and tried to bundle our stuff versus just to.
Leave it loose.
Leave it loose in, in the, the can. But, uh, if, if things are done, that, well, are you guys going to still pick it up, or, or what's going to happen? I mean, if we continue, I mean, if our public continue to have contaminated piles, like contaminated, I guess you still have to pick it up anyhow, because it's in a, it's in a cover.
Yeah, that, it.
Or you're going to put stickers on it the next time, say, you can't do it again.
It's, it's possible. We've done different campaigns in different areas, such as giving the sticker feedback, you know, this particular, you know, that bundle is, is problematic, kind of like we do with non-compliant larger piles or whatever. And so that's certainly something that's, that's possible. To your, to your question, what, what is the current outcome? Now, we'll continue picking it up. We just want to try and get that cleaned up as much as possible. It's not, again, it's a local issue, yes, but it's also a global issue. We see that everywhere. And so, as a company, we're, we're really doing a big push on clean, empty, and dry and education, and, again, trying to get everybody to recycle a little bit better.
What, what, what happens, Ivan, you said that y'all continue to pick it up, but what happens at some point in time if Liberty Roll Off says, we're not going to be your dump site anymore, that, you know, it's just not worth it to us to, to continue to do this because of, you know, glass, contaminated items, et cetera, et cetera? What happens?
Yeah, then, then we look at having to transport that material a lot further, and, and that's when costs start getting really crazy. Yes, sir. And what we're trying to do now is proactively keep costs as under control as possible, and you do that a variety of different ways. And having the materials, again, as clean and use, reusable as possible, continues that cycle. So we, we keep looking at all of the different ways that we can manage these different costs and, and.
So from a practical perspective, on January the second, you take this load of stuff to Liberty Roll Offs, and there is, God forbid, a piece of glass. Is that load going to be thrown into the trash dump at that point?
I'm going to have to ask Charlie on that.
They, they currently sort out the material and the contamination currently, so.
Right, but I understand that's not going to be the case going forward.
They're not, I don't believe they would contaminate a whole load or minimal. It's going to take some time. The only way we're going to see that the glass is still in the stream is once it enters the truck, whether it's, whether it's side load trucks or the rear load trucks, and we go about tagging it in carts, like we're trying to do.
Yeah, we understand that it's going to be a long process in getting it to limited, if any, glass in the stream. It's, it's a long process, but we, we've been asked to begin the process.
And some of the problems that I think about is, is when we started our recycling program in the city, and I don't know if the county started with waste management or not, but waste management didn't tell you to wash anything. They, they didn't tell you not to throw cardboard pizza boxes in. They, they had, did not have the limitations that you guys had come up with. It was just recycle, and it was working. I mean, it was, for now, people don't know what to put in the recycle can. And we were educated. We put, when we changed from waste management to Republic, I need to confirm this, but I did think that we put out some educational pieces, so people knew what the change.
Well, not really. I mean, you might have put out information, but, because I got one of those stickers myself, I guess. But, um, if, if, if I didn't know which week it was, I got off, and so my bin was out there, and then you got people walking by with some glass or something else that's not recyclable, and they just toss it in there, even though I might have the right stuff in there, then, I mean, I don't know that until I get a sticker on my bin.
Yes, sir.
So, um, so you're right, Johnny. I mean, that's what's really confusing, is the service is not.
Well, it has changed. Yeah, I was going to finish. Even Tinsel, which is very, very recyclable, and something that can be recycled, they, they said, well, I don't care what you do, you cook bacon on it, cook wherever you want to, throw it in the recycle thing. We'll take it, we want it that way. Now, I don't know if they changed or not, but, and, and perhaps they have, Ivan, but this is where the, the problem is, and what, you're, you advertise and says ninety percent of the people want to recycle. I really believe a lot more than that want to recycle, but they're so confused that it stays at ninety percent, a lot of people just won't do it, because of all the confusion. So.
Yes, sir. Yeah, over the past year, again, the China Sword has really put a big focus on everything. The, the other piece of paper that I left with you, the Recycling Economics, gives you a little bit of background. I didn't include, but I left it with both clerks, another document through the National Recycling Association. It's got little headlines from across the country on different aspects of recycling and the different problems that are, that are going on. But the, the focus on recycling, the clean, the empty, clean, and dry campaign, that's, that's what we call it, but you'll find that that is completely industry-wide. The, the focus isn't, isn't Republic, it's an issue nationwide with every provider. And every provider is, I mean, we, we don't, we don't confer with each other on which items are recyclable, which are not, but you'll find that, you know, the response is really pretty generic.
I know, I know we, go ahead. Ivan, what we're, if, if, if we come to a consensus and say, okay, we'll go along with informing the public, January first, that no more glass will be recycled, then how are they going to get that message? And that means, instead of recycling, then it goes to trash?
Yes, sir.
If it doesn't go to recycle, being needed more goes to trash, then.
Yes, sir.
How is that going to come about?
We're, we will be doing some forms of advertising, we will be doing some form of a sticker. We're, we haven't defined exactly what the sticker is, but there will be definitely a campaign to let people know. The, the marketing part, participation or the, the request for one dollar per home was to help offset that. But if the answer is no, and it's conceivable that the answer is no on the participation, there's still going to be an education piece that comes out. I mean, we have to.
Seems to me that stickers probably work as good as anything, because you know you've got a recyclable can at this address, so you put a sticker on that one and all the other, however many people doing it, and your drivers, as they sort through it each week when they pick it up, if they see that you have a can with the ass still in it, they can leave another sticker, as a reminder, you know, reminder sticker.
Yeah, my favorite is a sticker, because you can use a sticker to not only convey the no glass, but also convey the clean, empty, and dry, and pictures of the items that are highly recyclable. For me, a picture tells a big story, but there's, there's a variety of different people that will have their hand in selecting what the education piece is.
Well, I can understand if you, if, if China was the big place that was taking most of recyclables from the United States, and they want glass, they want everything clean if they can, but glass, if they want glass clean, I'm, I'm, I'm watching this thing and I'm thinking, well, you know, uh, there's an impact every time you start making things more complicated, more impact. And when you have to run fresh water, public utility water into a dirty bottle, a ketchup bottle, to get it clean, and that all goes down the drain, and you've got a utility furnishing, producing that fresh water, and they're treating that water after you contaminate that water with the ketchup out that bottle, and I'm not so sure, but the payoff to recycle that plastic can is a lot of work.
All right.
I mean, I'm, I'm just looking, I'm just looking at it from this end of the day.
Understood. Yeah, that, I'm, I'm, to amplify that a little bit is, that's the, that's the problem with recycling glass, is all of the costs to, you know, collect it, to transport it, because it is heavy, once it's all in one particular place to smash it down, to get it into a recyclable part, all of the energy in there, that, that's why it's a negative value. But your, your point is well taken. Are there any other questions?
No, sir. I've got one, one comment.
Yes, sir.
As I said before about your service has not been very good to, to the city of Brunswick, and that's something that we probably need to deal with. That may be one of the reasons why we would, could, will, or will not go with paying this one dollar, because we haven't been getting our, paying for our buck anyhow.
Understood.
So, with that, I'm sure that City Manager will be talking to, to Charlie and Tony and yourself about maybe trying to get better customer service, a better service.
Yes, sir, we've been having ongoing talks. Our, our most recent meeting.
Talks are just talks. They'll be talking about action.
Understood. Our most recent meeting with them was very, had some pretty tangible things in it that we're working towards making that product, that, that process work a lot better.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. I'm sorry about trying to.
No, no.
Tell you breaking something right here, you're talking about recycling, but we're talking about service.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, it's about service, and as far as, I live in the city as a taxpayer, I would encourage my representatives not to spend another dime for this, because I'm sure that more than six thousand dollars was saved from the lack of service just in my neighborhood alone, with non-picking-up debris and other services, and that, that was caused by the lack of a customer service. But, yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm not aware of any issues in the county, Mr. Ives. Have you, is there anything you need to, to stress out about?
Commissioners, good afternoon. The county, we've had an excellent relationship with Republic. They are very responsive to, you know, to work with us in any issues we had. However, in terms of the glass, you might, you all might recall a few years ago, the glass recycling wasn't a part of our waste stream. But it became a part of our waste stream because our citizens requested it, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but the overwhelming number of county residents, you know, said, you know, we, we believe in recycling, and we think it's great for the economy, we want to get this material as much as possible to be, to be reused, and, and we would like for you to consider putting glass in the waste stream. And the Board of Commissioners heard the citizens loud and clear, and in fact, it's in our contract. The contract that the county has with Republic requires them to recycle glass, okay? So it's, it's a contractual issue as well, and I, I perfectly understand the, the glass and the breaking and contaminating the other parts of the recycling stream. I understand that, but the question I have is, are there other ways for our community to collect, to recycle the, the glass and market it? I talked with the Republic representative for the Atlanta area, and they in fact have a, a different way up there that they recycle glass, because the glass saves here, contaminates the waste stream. So it is a contractual issue that would have to be looked at. Perhaps are there, there are other ways to recycle the glass, and, you know, we're talking about residents, but there are also perhaps businesses that is meaningful to them to recycle glass. So I think maybe there's more to the conversation than what appears. From my perspective, any calls to, for public relations, I think should be going by Republic. The county has a five million dollar annual contract with them, and a dollar per household, I mean, a dollar per can for recycling, you know, for public relations advertising. My thought is actually a part of their expense, not additional expense on the county. But we'll be glad to, to meet with Ivan and his team to see if there, there are other ways perhaps to take care of the glass part of it, but it is in our contract, it is something that our citizens wholeheartedly requested that we consider.
I think you're sharing that you don't have this promotion money in your budget.
No, sir, and if it was, I would recommend.
I understand.
If you remember when this, when this discussion came up, we were even looking at maybe separate bins, but then it became a thing of equipment and manpower and things like that, of how to pick it up and, you know, transport it one way or another, so we went through that.
City Manager?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Drum, would you like to make a comment?
Well, I would, I would agree that we don't have the money budgeted for dollar per customer, but our contract does actually include that Republic would educate our citizens every six months. And so initially, when we took on the contract in September of twenty sixteen, that we had the very initial mail-out to our, our residents, but after that, we had not seen additional contacts. So I would think the savings they have from the mailings and everything that they have in the last year and a half should be used to put towards.
So they were supposed to edu, do an education campaign every six months in the city?
Sure.
And they've only done it at the beginning?
Correct.
But yet, they're asking for money again.
We've, we've made the request throughout the contract to say, six months has passed, and we haven't seen it. So I think that we should be able to bear that cost.
I'm starting to get the sense that this promotion money might be a little, little tough coming.
Not everybody listens to the radio, not everybody gets the paper, and not everybody's going to really do what needs to be done with a sticker, but just about everybody goes to the grocery store, and a lot of people go to the gas station. So my thought would be, think of other ways to get the word out that are more likely to hit a broader section of the population.
Scott McQuaid would ask if he could say a word about this from the perspective of the city, the CBB.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. The news is concerning. I have also followed the news about what's happening in the industry and the nation. I have seen many counties and cities actually solve the problem by finding a local source for the glass. I believe that we have been told that there is a local source in Jacksonville for the glass. The reason why the tourism industry is concerned is many of our hotels and several of our restaurants is part of their corporate responsibility code to do recycling, and we already hear from visitors that, from facilities that don't do it. So I, I do believe that it's going to cause concern from both visitors' perspective, but also from those businesses that have a responsibility back to their corporate offices to recycle. So I would just ask that we try everything that we can to solve the problem before we just give up on it.
Thank you. Mayor, I think we probably need some more work on this, and we get our, our staff together and let's brainstorm this thing a little more.
Just thinking back to the glass thing, and Alan brought up, it was not part of your contract originally. The city didn't recycle at all, and we brought it in, and, you know, I can't remember exactly, I guess it was Easter Seals, went over to the front of manufacturing company over there and opened up a recycling. there and opened up a recycling sub-.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you carried your stuff over there is what you did, that's how it got started here. Everybody that wanted to recycle, carried it over to the old front of the manufacturing and they had all the people out there, when the icing comes getting stuff out, newspapers, which I haven't heard anything about today, well, we're supposed to stop doing that or what?
No, we just, just on there.
But, but anyway, they'd come out and get your stuff, because I remember even the glass, they would take a, a green bottle and throw it in one box and a brown bottle in another box, spare glass in another box, but we've gotten away from all that stuff. Then we moved it out to Perry Lane Road. It still was people who wanted to recycle, carried their recycle out there and much of it was done out there because they had more space out there. You'd get out of your car and carry your stuff around and put it in a different bin. People want to recycle, but the glass thing is key, I believe, I really do, trying to hold on to it if there's any way to do it. And I appreciate that, Alan, that you're looking at it, I really do, because people wanted to recycle glass and that brought all this other stuff up to where it is today. Because people really and truly did not want to throw the glass away, they wanted it recycled, they wanted it repurposed. Maybe they got the job done for it, but people were willing to get out of their car, carry it, I carried mine at lunch, I had many times a thirty minute lunch and I somehow got my recycle even out to Perry Lane Road out there. So, uh, I think it's important for us to get back together, look at all our options and, and see what we need to do here.
Well, Commissioners, I don't think we've, uh, resolved this issue today and, and the conversation will continue with, with our staff to come back with some recommendations and we'll move forward. We are, uh, getting short on time and so, uh, nobody has anything else regarding this recycling, uh, we'll, uh, receive an update on the way, uh, wayfinding signage plan and Mr. McQuaid. Executive Director of the CBB.
All right. Oops. Down the line.
Is this all recyclable?
It's a single use, you have one issue.
Make sure you recycle these when you go in the trash tonight.
My God.
Boy. Had money spent on that.
Just a handout off the porch.
All right, uh, I'm going to try my best to get this done quickly for you. Uh, we started on a journey, uh, over two years ago on working on a gateway initiative which was improving, uh, the signage and the wayfinding signage and it's, the project initiative was to, uh, restore and enhance the aesthetic character of the city of Brunswick and Glen County gateways, provide positive visual cues to signal community pride, best practices and to attract businesses, but also attract people to those businesses. It enhances visual wayfinding experiences when moving up and down our county, city and state roads. It also will, uh, help us clean up visual clutter and promote economic development. So why does this initiative matter? Uh, we obviously support a large tourism industry, we depend on outside investments for job growth, we support a four-year college and a robust and growing medical system, we also want to support the quality of life that can be improved by enhancing our gateway and signage. So again, this came out of the gateways initiative, this is just one aspect of it, and I know the county and city continue to work on other aspects of the gateways, uh, but this is why it's important. Our gateways lead to our community, whether they're our hospital, our college, our resort amenities, our downtown, all golf, all golf tournaments, Sea Island, St. Simons and all the various endpoints in our community. So what do our gateways currently say? Uh, this is a picture looking down one of our corridors and we've got some work to do not only on clutter, but, uh, the visual appearance of our signs and the effectiveness of those signs. If you can imagine for a moment, we're all familiar with our road systems, but being a new time visitor or being here as an investor, looking to do business, uh, this is what we see, it can make it pretty hard to pick out where your indicators are. And of course, signs love to attract more signs, it's just, uh, one of those odd things that, uh, it seems when you get a sign that your next door neighbor gets a bigger one and it just grows from there. Uh, and then of course, we have a number of temporary signs that pop up to compete with the permanent signs. From a waste finding perspective, again, keep in mind, if you can look through this practice, and this is what we did, we looked through this practice in partnership with the county and city in the CBB, if you recall, uh, to go through this comprehensive study, we looked at it from the angle of a visitor or a first-time guest to the area and, uh, this is just a simple practice of, okay, I, I want to try to find Brunswick or St. Simons, uh, coming down seventeen, um, I'm not sure what those two streets are, and if you can imagine, if, if you're in this lane, which is three over from the center, or in this lane, you're not going to catch this sign hidden off in the bushes. Now DOT provides signage basically, I would say, on, on a very low common denominator, they're not, uh, bold signs, they're not signs that stick out, but they're, uh, do what is required by the state law on state roads, but as you can imagine, also a car or a truck goes by this sign and, uh, very hard to see that sign as you go by it. Again, this just gives you more insight as you go forward and if you can imagine, here we are at the stoplight and there's, it's giving us our direction where we should go. Well, if you happen to be in this lane or this lane or this lane, it's too late, even if you could pick up on that sign. So it was very evident that we had issues, uh, with our signage and signage is really the first step of many to try to fix and enhance the gateway project. Uh, these are some of the signs, our studies that have been done in the past, uh, signage and landscaping can make a very big impact to the area and, uh, not only how we perceive, perceive it and taking more pride in our community, but also how our visitors perceive it and making them want to come back to our community. And these are just some examples of, uh, comprehensive wayfinding signage programs that have been done in other areas, both from a monument sign perspective, which we're going to talk a little bit about, as well as a wayfinding perspective. Often those two components work together. Again, you can just see some other examples. The examples I used were branded wayfinding signs, uh, because again, I'm not knocking on DOT, but they have a very standard white and green lettered sign where these are really taking it up, I would say, you know, ten notches above that, so people have a much harder time missing these signs than they would a, a normal DOT sign. So this project was, uh, a bit of a beast, I have to say, probably the reason it took so long. You'll see how comprehensive that book is and I hope that you are, um, pleased with the amount of detail that the study conducted. Uh, the surveyors went out to all the various locations, made, um, marks in the areas in which the signs needed to be removed, uh, improved, and those are all coordinated with GPS points. And they also took forward best practices and made recommendations for each sign its size and they did studies in which would calculate the speed of travel, a passenger would be going by those signs and rated those signs, um, per both DOT and US federal highway standards. So to comprehend how big this project is, we really had to break it out by map and by section and go out in the field and basically backtrack, if you will. And this is going to give you a little example of that practice and how we're able to come at our end conclusions. Uh, this is actually coming off, uh, exit ninety-five at exit twenty-nine. When you see a little blank piece of grass there, that means there's actually not an existing sign there currently, so people coming off that side of the highway wouldn't necessarily know which way to go to get into, uh, Glen County and to the various attractions. Then as we did put them on their path, we also noticed, well, uh, best practices would tell you at least every two to four miles, there should be a reminder marker that you're headed in the right direction. And this is what this is, you'll notice probably the cars, that's going by the ports authority, that's a very dark stretch of highway, what we're trying to do is telling people, you're on the right path, just keep going, follow the area, arrows to your destination. And here we come to a crossroads at a new destination, as you can see, it's signed well in advance, uh, to make the turn for Jekyll, but to stay forward for St. Simons in Brunswick. There happens to be a sign right here, uh, that tells people St. Simons is twenty miles ahead and that is actually incorrect. Uh, if you calculate that total, um, mileage to St. Simons, what ends up happening is people feel like it's twenty miles down the road. One of the most common calls that we get are people in Darien saying, I have missed the turn for St. Simons, because they were misled by that sign. So of course, we corrected that, but after they came off the bridge, again, another two miles down the road, we're reminding them, uh, where their end destination is and that they're on the right path. Of course, when they get into Brunswick, you'll see the individual city marker take over on the cue of the sign and then the city limits will have its own brand for the city and direct people to those specific areas in which are in the city. This is just another example of how you sign further outside and this is showing people how to get to the college close to Georgia, the hospital and back downtown. The other thing to note is all the signs, uh, basically complete, complete the loop. So if you're out on St. Simons, they're going to bring you back to Brunswick, if you're in Brunswick, you're going to be able to go to St. Simons, Jekyll, and what it's meant to do is really just circulate people so that they can share the whole experience and it's also providing education. A lot of people miss those signs, well, they may be driving by in the future and say, wow, I didn't know there was a college here, I didn't know that there was a hospital here and it, it actually helps as a marketing tool as well. Uh, this happens to be just a quick study on St. Simons, you see as you come into St. Simons, you pick up the cue of the St. Simons, uh, brand logo and then you, you are, um, directed to your various points and we're trying to do that again in advance. The other component of the sign program is to get people sorted out on the highways and roadways prior to making their choice of where they have to turn. Probably one of the most, um, prominent examples that I see on a daily basis is people coming off the causeway onto St. Simons and they're trying to make last-minute decisions which way they want to go because the signage is not adequate and it's signed, um, not far enough advance. Here we have it well before they have to make that choice where you currently see people swerving to get back into the right lanes that they were unaware of, so it corrects some safety issues as well. And again, this gives you another example about directing people back to being able to leave the destination or to go to other places, so signaling whether, um, you're on St. Simons, how to get back to Brunswick or I-95, your popular roadways. This happens to be the family of, uh, design, if you will, uh, they looked at several different factors, uh, the city of Brunswick uses a historic, uh, black powder-coated pole and we wanted to mimic that in the historic downtown. Uh, highway signs are required to have breakaway poles, that's why they're all on the same type of pole, it's a hollow breakaway pole, so it doesn't injure the traveler. And then as you get onto St. Simons, uh, you can have a little bit more leeway because they are, uh, the county road, so currently they're a wood sign and, uh, we've priced out both wood and metal signs on, uh, St. Simons, uh, should there be a direction on where to go forward with that. Again, this just kind of goes through the quick snapshot, you'll see all the details are in your packet should you, um, want to follow each pathway, but this just gives you a wrap-up of just some of those areas in which we're directing people to. You can see it's very comprehensive and it hits all the main areas. Some of the signs that we have now, particularly on St. Simons, are referring to particular businesses, we did not want to do that, we feel like that gives a business an unfair advantage and, uh, some of those signs you may have noticed, uh, basically start at about ten feet and go all the way down to the bottom, uh, I'm sure many have had this experience, but there's no way a pa, passenger could read all that, um, text on a sign as well, so there are several good reasons for removing the individual businesses and this is really just getting people to the main areas, uh, on their journey.
Scott, right there, so we go with this, is all what's out there now come down?
Mm-hmm. Uh, so the, the.
At the first, you said the DOT did what they had to do by law.
Right.
So, I mean, by law, can we still take this?
So the, the current proposal, the way they've done the sign program is a, it's a one-to-one replacement and, uh, we'll have to work through DOT and this company has worked with DOT and has consulted with DOT through the process, um, but basically, we get to take down one, we get to replace one, one, long as that sign, uh, meets their code and standard and in fact, this would exceed their code and standard and, and improve several of the elements, uh, that they require. The other, uh, area that we looked at is repl-